Welcome to this regular meeting of the Lennox Township Board and Trustees, December 6, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, I have an item to be added to the meeting agenda, and that would be a request to authorize expenditures looking at ordinance for recreational marijuana. And I believe we also are going to take off the planning commission appointment. Those are the only two items I have, sir.
All right, we have the motions in order.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
May Deputy Court please call the roll?
Hallow?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Approval of minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the November 8th Board of Trustees meeting as presented. Second.
May Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kendell?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Public announcements. Public comment. Consent agenda, all items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion according to established township meeting rules. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests act or prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such item from the consent agenda for discussion in consideration under agenda number, item number eight below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be made by a majority roll call vote of those present and voted.
Should I have in front of you a bills list showing a request to approve $396,12... Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the orders and bills in the amount of $396,012.44.
Second. May Deputy Court please call the roll?
Curly?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item removed from consent agenda EMS report, Mr. White.
Good evening, members of the board. It's always a pleasure to be here tonight for what we get to do, which is swear in some new members of the Emergency Medical Services Authority. This is one part of the job that never gets old, if you will. And so with that, I'd like to invite up tonight those candidates who will tonight receive their badge and be sworn in in front of the township board. So with that, if those folks can come up along with whoever's going to be pinning their badge now, and just if you'd like to stand right here by the podium, that would be wonderful. You're allowed to move closer. Mr. Supervisor, honorable members of the board, as EMS professionals, we regard ourselves as members of an important and time-honored profession. As such, we administer to our employees at the conclusion of their probation an oath. The purpose of this oath is to ensure our citizens that we will conduct ourselves in a manner that will be a credit to the township and the Endos Authority. This evening, I present to you the following employees who after taking their oath will receive their badge. They are Medics Josh Rigby, Medic David Ferdinand, Medic Brittany Watts, EMT Quinn Fox, and EMT Daniel Sullivan. We always invite family members up to assist with the pinning ceremony, and tonight is somewhat unique in that we have a number of family members who will be pinning badges on family members. So we have parents, a husband who's taking care of a baby, whose wife is receiving her badge tonight here with us, and a proud mom and dad back here as well, as the other members of families who have joined us. Colleagues, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and answer my due to the following questions. I recognize at all times I am a public servant and that ultimately I am responsible for the safety and well-being of myself, my colleagues, and all citizens. I will accept responsibility for my actions by exhibiting honesty and integrity. I will promote diversity within our organization and ensure fair and open access to all who call for service. I will observe the highest principles of fairness and strive to meet those values which reflect honor upon the township, the EMS, and myself. I will seek to maintain and improve my professional knowledge, skills, and competence. Now, if you swear to follow and uphold all the department SOPs, medical treatment protocols, state and federal laws, as well as the state of Michigan and U.S. Constitution. Finally, do affirm you will not permit or cause any employer or agent acting on your behalf to do anything which would constitute a violation of this oath. All right, the family members all have the badges. I'm going to ask if they pin them on at this point. No, please, yeah, no, how much did we draw any blood? All joking aside, this has been certainly an unusual couple of year period. We only had the opportunity to do this about once a year where we bring these folks in front of you. But certainly EMS right now can be a terribly challenging career. A recruiting poster that says, "Come to work for us," and you can get in the back of an ambulance that's about the size of most people's walk-in closet with people who are suffering from this terrible virus is not a good way to get people to join organizations. Having said that, these brave young men and women took up that challenge and come and join to serve our community, and I could not be prouder of them. So with that, township board members, citizens at large, on behalf of the Richmond Lennox Township Council's Authority, it is my privilege to formally present these sworn professionals, who I now attest are fully prepared to serve you and our citizens. Thank you.
Unfinished business, amendment to section 2202 of the Lennox Township ordinance. Do you have any?
I believe that all board members received that six-page directive opinion from Mr. Kelly, our attorney, and his, I think, I believe that at this point, he is waiting for the board to make a decision as to which one of the options that he laid out the board wishes to proceed with.
I have not seen that six-page opinion. It was a mail to me, or was it in my mailbox?
It probably was in your email.
Possibly, I might have missed it, I'll check my emails.
I can see something, but there wasn't an attachment to it.
It was not an attachment, it was just a six-page opinion.
No, I didn't get that.
Okay, then I would say that if that's the case, and all of our board members are not prepared to make a decision that we need to table until the next meeting.
I'll make sure that we're...
Okay.
I shall not give one either.
I'll make a motion at this point that we table item 9A unfinished business until all members are prepared to discuss. A second.
I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kendell?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Township security camera system upgrade, Mr. White.
Yes, just a quick update on this ongoing project at the township. I did provide for the board tonight some information that I received from Johnson Control, which is one of the vendors, they're actually our current vendor here at Lennox Township with regards to the cameras. Oh, this really doesn't include any pricing or anything of that nature. Just at this point in time, kind of gives you an idea of what the system would look like. I've got a copy for you, Matt, I set it up there for you. I realize you're going to sit back here, so I'll hand it off to you in just a moment here. There we go.
Thank you.
The one system, the initial photo just kind of shows the current layout of the cameras in the building. The supervisor and I spoke with the Johnson Control representative when they were in the building and talked about adding one camera, and I put just a note about that on the photograph. A camera that would be up above the working area, cubicle kind of areas, and near the kind of planning and treasury, treasurer's department doors down there. That camera's not shown on here. The other views just are floor plans of the various buildings where we would be adding cameras, and the yellow triangles indicate the locations of those cameras. Johnson Controls has provided us two pieces of information. One is an actual cost for the installation and maintenance of these on a monthly basis, and the other piece is somewhat separate, but I think we can take it up at the same time next month. I just received that the last day or so and didn't want to try to push it through on the agenda just yet. But that is a maintenance agreement, or an ongoing maintenance agreement, for the car reader system. Right now, the car reader system's cost is, I want to say it's just in the $5,000 range for the maintenance, the annual maintenance on that car reader system, and Johnson Control is willing irrespective of the camera quote to decrease that to about $3,500, just in various discussions that we've had with them on it. So that is, that is good news. Johnson Control also currently monitors, the system that's in place, the monitoring fee, again, somewhat separate from the camera quote, is about $2,500, and that monitors for fire protection and police protection. Now, arguably, we might not need police monitoring with the sheriffs in the building, but there's not, if they're monitoring, they're monitoring for both. There's not a cost savings to eliminate one of those.
Yeah, police protection, yeah. Police protection would just be with a burglar alarm going off, and they sit here, so...
Right, right. So that's, that is just information that will be forthcoming in the next meeting. Trustee Clifford and I are due to meet. He has had meetings and information provided by two vendors that he is familiar with through his, I believe through his full-time employer. And we are supposed to be getting together and then comparing the three documents and trading the recommendation back to the board.
I spoke with those two vendors in the last two days. They are kind of like saying tuning up their price range, and one does provide monitoring, and that would be Interstate, that's who we currently use at New Haven Community Schools. We don't have to go with them, I'm just saying that they provide monitoring, and the other vendor does also, but he's just new into that. Those two prices, I apologize. Sorry about that. But anyway, those prices will be available this meeting, and I am meeting. You and I are going to talk after the meeting. They want to sit down with you and I again, both those vendors, and so we'll have a meeting with each one of them beforehand. You've met with Johnson, and in call for the board, I do have a report on the other part of that that you and I have talked about, but we'll sit down this week and meet with all of them. I don't need to meet with Johnson, I can see it, and see what they have to say, those other two guys. They're ready.
All right, good. So that was just an updated report.
So I make a motion, we table approval of the camera system until, Mr. White, I present you guys, the rest of the board, with a complete report on how all these cameras are going to be.
Is that going to be done by the next meeting, Scott, do you think?
That'll be by next meeting, absolutely. If we're meeting this next week, I've got to talk to Jeff about dates, or times, rather. Yep, I have the, they emailed me late in the day today, everything, but I haven't printed it all yet.
I will second that.
But they want to sit down with us, so, yeah, it'll be by next meeting, definitely.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Clifford?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
2022 TPW Operators Day Request, Mr. Tronley.
He, there's a structured fire that got called to, so he had to leave. I, the board has all of the information in their packet for the Operators Day that it is the same thing that we have approved year after year that Cam and John would go to because they're both the licensed operators. So that being said, I don't see any reason, in fact, I will make a motion that we approve the Operators Day request as presented by Mr. Tronley in the amount of $500. Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, supported by trustee Curly. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kendell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item C, 2022 Assessment Change Notice Preparation and Mail Request.
This is brought forth by the Assessing Department. Again, it is a repeat, something that they do every year. Christine goes out and gets quotes to have the assessment notices and the personal property statements printed and mailed, and this year it appears that she went to KCI Communications and Whitlock Business Systems. In the case of the 2022 personal property statements, her recommendation is that we go with Whitlock Business Systems with an estimated cost of $244.44. The second item is the 2022 Assessment Change Notices, and it is, again, KCI Communications and Whitlock Business Systems. In this case, KCI Communications came in with $2,081.04. Both include postage, and Christine has recommended in this case that we use KCI for the printing and mailing of the Assessment Change Notices. I would believe because we've got two different vendors recommending, we should probably do this in two motions. So I would say...
No, they are two separate, I'm simply checking that.
Okay, all right. The first one, I would make a motion that we approve Whitlock Business Systems to prepare and mail 2022 personal property statements for the Assessing Department.
I second.
I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, seconded by trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve KCI Communications at the cost of $2,081.04 to mail the Assessment Change Notices.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Curly. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Clifford?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
2022 Poverty Exemption Policy and Guidelines Improvement Request.
Too many pieces of paper here. Again, this is the Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines and Applications. This is put forth by the state and is the township's responsibility to approve it for Lennox Township. It does not appear that it changed from last year.
I read through both, and I agree, I don't think it's changed at all.
I will make a motion that we approve the 2022 Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines and Application as presented to us by the Assessing Department.
I second.
I have a motion by Clerk Kendell, supported by trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Kendell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Zoning Board of Appeals appointments. You all should have received a letter in your packet that Supervisor's office is renaming Kirk Flood for a full term, Mary Beth Paisley for a full term, and Charles Strummer as an alternate for a full term, all expiring December 31st, 2025.
I make a motion, we approve Kirk Flood for, well, the date is the same on all these. Approve Kirk Flood, Mary Beth Paisley, and Charles Strummer for their ZBA appointments.
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Clifford?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Building Department Additional Inspector Position Request.
Uncle Big, we all received an email from Amy Flood, Building Department Manager, requesting that we, because of the rapid growth and development within the township, she would like to make a request that we hire additional inspectors to meet increased demand. The reason we need new inspectors is because the ones we currently have are very limited on their time and cannot make any more time for us. So that being said, she would like to request that we put an ad in the paper for a mechanical plumbing inspector, and that we... Well, actually, I think that's all we're going to do right now, after my last conversation.
When is Bob, does Bob made mention of what how long he's staying, or just till spring?
No, well, she requested that we not advertise for Bob's position quite yet because we're not sure when he's leaving, and we don't want to put somebody on the line and then not be able to tell them when they would be able to start.
I got you.
So in this case, we are just looking to put an ad in the paper for a mechanical inspector and a plumbing inspector, or both, if somebody's capable of doing both.
Now, if we hire, I don't know if, I haven't talked to him, if we hired, that would be a third mechanical inspector, is Kelly Smith stepping down, or Israel?
Kelly Smith does not do much for us at all because he is involved in three other communities and just doesn't have time, and he doesn't have time to do anything additional.
So we, in a sense, be replacing Kelly?
We, I don't know that we would be replacing Kelly, we would just have another person on board. Tim Israel, who was our current inspector.
I don't have a problem with three, but I just, you know...
Right, yeah, it doesn't matter, they only get paid by inspection, so... Tim Israel, our current inspector, is only available a couple days a week for a few hours at a time, and Mr. Smith is not available a lot of the time, and she's just having a hard time scheduling inspections for people when we don't have inspectors available.
Well, I make a motion, we advertise for a mechanical inspector with a hold on the electrical position to assist in our gladly increasing permits.
We also need a plumbing inspector.
What's that? You want to call the plumbing? Mechanical, that's part of it.
Mechanical and plumbing.
Yeah, Steve's not doing dual certifications anymore. Well, I thought he was doing both, oh, yeah, for mechanical and plumbing, then, yes.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by clerk Kendell. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Clifford?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
Curly?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Microsoft Exchange Archiving Renewal.
That is a, archiving is a process that our IT people use to archive all emails of people who have left the company and no longer have active emails. That leaves that information available if we ever get voided and need to have specific information. You can't just delete it, it's in the system, it's archived, it's available, and it is time to renew that system. And that system goes by the number of email addresses or servers that we have, which is currently 31, and it's $38 per unit, so we're looking at $1,178.
I make a motion that we approve High Tech for the archiving of emails.
I have a motion by trustee Curly, supported by Treasurer Hallow. May the Deputy Court please call the roll?
Curly?
Aye.
Hallow?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendell?
Aye.
2022 Michigan Township Association MTA Conference.
Lansing this year, huh?
Lansing, yeah.
Such enthusiasm.
Oh, no, I do like it.
I thought it was one of the ways.
I enjoy the MTA, Lansing is a little bit, it's not as convenient as Traverse City is when it comes to getting around different places. If you're in an outlying hotel, you got to catch a bus to get to the conference center and whatever. So I'm sorry if I didn't sound enthusiastic, but registration for the MTA opens on January 4th. That's why we're bringing this to the board today. We would like approval for the five elected officials to attend the MTA's annual conference in Lansing, April 25th through the 28th.
Is Mr. Cassin going to be joining us as well?
Oh, Mr. Cassin, you want to join us as well? So, yes, I guess we should make it for six people then, Mr. Cassin and the five elected officials, if Mr. Cassin is available.
I will make a motion to approve the MTA attendance for the five officials and Mr. Cassin.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hallowell, supported by Court Kandell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Pannell?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-two Meeting Schedule.
I will make a motion, we approve the 2022 Lenox Township Meeting Schedule as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hallowell, supported by trustee Gurley. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Pannell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
All right. Recreational Marijuana Ordinance Draft.
Mr. Cassin, please.
As the board may remember, we got into this, the initial, got into marijuana initially two, three years ago now. Excuse me, recreational marijuana wasn't even allowed in the state of Michigan, but we allowed several facilities to, preliminary certificates to grow or in or process and or, well, and to dispense. A lot of those have not been able to come to fruition. We do have a few now that are still looking to develop. One is a very large conglomerate from Canada that is working with Mr. Addis's office to look to bring quite a few hundred, you know, upwards of a couple hundred thousand acres or square feet, excuse me, of grow for marijuana. And then we have a couple others that we've approved in the past that are, have approached the township clerk and myself, looking to be allowed to also vend or grow recreational marijuana. Now, from a planning and zoning perspective, it's almost impossible to look at a facility and determine whether it's a grow for recreational or a grow for marijuana. If you think about it, when you're growing, it is growing these marijuana plants, you know, the requirements are the same, where they go, how they're used for personal purposes or for medical purposes makes no difference. Even the recreation facilities, the combined recreation and marijuana and medical facilities that have gone up in places like, for example, Utica, there's two new ones in Utica, you know, from the outside, you can't tell what are they, what are they selling, you know, whether they're medical, for medical or recreational, and most of them are recreational. So I'm not asking for a decision on whether Natasha should proceed in that arena. I am suggesting to you that we have developers waiting that probably will not come to us and will not more than likely be able to succeed unless they get it, because they just can't compete as the times have changed. If issue is now like for personal use, recreational, state. What I'm asking is that you allow, at least the township attorney's office, to begin drafting up regulations and ordinance for you to review, hopefully within the next month or two.
Have we gotten any feelers about how, I guess this is probably a stupid question, but how our community feels about going to recreational?
No.
We're not going to stop at it's here, but I do know some of the zoning problems we've had recently with being too close to a grow facility that going to recreational, I would want to probably keep the same regulations in place if we went to recreational to, you know, to keep it so far from the living area, you know, or a church or a school, whatever our current regulations sit at. I would like that involved in it if we were to go to it. But that being said, I would, I'd love to give our legal department, I would make a motion to give them to explore the ordinance and do what they need to do to, for possibly moving to that. How are we aware that Mr. Cassin on that?
Direct the township attorney to draft a, an ordinance to regulate recreational marijuana.
Correct.
I'll second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, seconded by Treasurer Hallowell. May the deputy clerk please call the roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Pannell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kandell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hold on a minute. Call from the board.
I do have something. Mr. White and I are going to meet on the cameras. We also during that time period we had, I have explored the state of Michigan MDOT about a traffic signal at 29 mile of Grashit, and unfortunately, and that's, this is my world for 30 years, there's warrants you have to meet for a traffic signal. Unfortunately, we make, we almost meet the majority of the seven warrants that you need to put a light up there and have the state cover the cost. There are other ways to do it. Right now, we're short on, one of the warrants is obviously pedestrian traffic, not meeting that one, but vehicular traffic, we're within 1,000 cars on the landfill coming out to Grashit. We're, we only have 72 cars on average leaving 29 mile road coming into the, to Grashit on the west side, so that doesn't help us. If we had more traffic there, it would. Right now, we probably, we're close on all the warrants. Right now, they will not do it and put a traffic signal with 29 at Grashit, but we are close. I have a meeting scheduled with Mr. David Atkins, a guy I talked to. He works out of that office, and he's the one that explored the whole situation to me, and he called me, it was yesterday, no, the day before, and came up with that answer. Obviously disappointed me because I would have rather put a traffic signal up than to, and Mr. White and I have talked about this, the enforcement vehicle, it takes effect in January, I believe, that starts, Jeff?
Yes.
In January. They're going to help, and he suggested that, but he also said building a traffic signal once would be better than 170 grand a year for as long as we keep the code in full, so. But right now, we're going to be meeting once a year, me and this gentleman, and we're going to monitor the situation and traffic. There are other ways to go about getting a traffic signal, but that would be our township, possibly waste management, possibly surrounding communities, anti-mug, and going to the point where we would pay for it ourselves, but I would rather not do that average traffic signal there with, you know, if you included the pedestrian signals, you're probably looking at a quarter of a million dollars, and that's based on like us.
I believe that one over there on 26th and County Line did cost a quarter million.
What's that?
Believe that one on 26th and County Line did cost a quarter million.
I know it was close. I didn't get into that with, I have friends still at the road commissioner who are going in, but right now, we're not meeting the warrants, and unfortunately, I would rather see that, I know the land's talked about getting cut off. I've been cut off by those trucks because they take so long getting off 29 by the time they get moving, and the intersection's wider now. We, in fact, I, to be honest with you, I wouldn't mind seeing traffic signals from all the way to 31 on every mile road, but that ain't going to happen. So I'll monitor this. I don't know if you've talked to anybody since, Jeff, but this conversation just happened two days ago.
No, you had said you were working with somebody there. I would just hope that maybe the township would consider the idea of possibly budgeting that money. Those warrants can be long to come if we don't see a lot more development in the township, and I think it is a public safety issue that might warrant a discussion and budget time about maybe moving forward with that.
You seem to think that we would possibly meet the warrants by next year, having the majority of the seven warrants. We're close on five of them right now, but just not quite enough, so. We can do that. I can, I can possibly talk to waste management, see how they feel about it, as far as money, but I can't, you know, even then, that would have to be approved by the State Department if we all agreed to say, hey, well, we'll build this, or pay, we'll pay the cost, but I think it's something worth looking at, especially for 29. I, it's horrible, and you can program those things to just flash green or flash yellow all day. They'll do whatever you want with cameras and everything now, so it's, we could move traffic a whole lot safer, and we're moving it now. But that being said, I'll monitor it until my board tells me difference. I'm going to make some conversations behind the scenes, let's put it that way. So that's all.
Adjourned.
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:12. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.